Dear Jesus, you've been so good to us, we appreciate it. We'll never be able to thank you for your kindness to our city. Help us do your will again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Alan, yes, Chris presenting.
Here.
John.
Here.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second, the proof man is written. Roll call?
Alan?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
All right. Financial position.
Okay, page, third page is the balance sheet for the general fund. Year-to-year comparison, August twenty-four to August twenty-five. There's only eight, eight thousand dollars worth of tanks one year, went up eighty thousand dollars. Next page is the August twenty-four to August twenty-five comparison profit and loss. Had a almost fifteen hundred dollar loss this year versus eighty-five hundred last year.
Been like it ever since you got on your I O.
Part of it is insurance. And some vehicle expense, that's pretty well the two big ones to make up that difference. And the next two pages are the year-to-date. From twenty-four to twenty-five. We've got a hundred fifty-one thousand dollar loss in twenty-five, same time last year sixteen thousand dollar loss. But you can look at the park expense, a hundred thirty-eight thousand, court expense fifteen thousand. Little increase in salaries. And forty-eight thousand dollars less in income. Where most of that is from.
A big part of that's gonna be that grant money that came in from the park. And like it come in last year's income when you spend it this year.
And then profit and loss compared to the budget to actual, the next two pages, I guess actually next two pages. Looks like we're a little behind schedule on revenue with a lot of that is like the library donation of twenty thousand, ninety-nine thousand dollar park grant is in the budget, we don't have them in here yet, so. Put those in there and we'd be right about where we ought to be in August. Park expenses go. A little bit higher than we should technically be this time of year, about seventy-eight percent. Still tracking pretty decently there. Next one is the street fund balance sheet. It's got about one point seven, a little one point seven billion dollars versus one point four last year. P and L on the next page for August. This, for, just for the month of August, had a twenty-nine thousand, almost thirty thousand dollars, eighty thousand versus sixty-seven thousand dollar loss last year. Revenue's about the same, but we had sidewalk expense last year that we don't this year. Yeah, it's coming. It's all about timing. Then year-to-date through the end of August is the next page. Again, you've got the, there's street resurfacing in there, sidewalk expense in there for last year, not in this year, so. Then the budget to actual on the next page.
And the street resurfacing, they have started. So. They're working on, they did, got Oakville Street pretty much done today. And they were gonna take two loads of patching and go up and do work on the, the load in the Red Cellar. They're gonna start with two of the patching, they need two loads of patching on it today, they didn't want to order any more. That's what they're gonna do today, so they're working on that. They've got seventy, oh seventy look done, and Dog Force Road, parts has haven't been done. Those two are chipped too. They've got that finished.
Very nice, thank you, as someone who lives up there. Next page, we sent the street fund balance sheet, about ninety-five thousand dollars in assets, which is all cash. The month of August, P and L on the next page. Very similar to last year, year-to-date on the next page. A little behind last year. Thirty thousand. Wages and we did increase the contract for board. And then the budget to actual on the next.
One reason that we're growing, I'm assuming is city rates have been high and it's up going back into offset some other grid.
Some other grid.
Which ain't gonna continue much longer.
I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think we'd continue the same rate structure we got. At least not for the championship. Water and sewer department balance sheet. Next two pages. About five point, almost six million dollars in checking savings camps, most of them have CDs which are earning, most of them are earning at least four percent.
One reason why that balance is a little higher than it was two years ago, your restructure of the mills, you haven't had the big milk payments on the water and sewer, but you will have those, put those projects get started. So those numbers are jumping up, we'll have a cushion for about three years there. And then that money will start going back down to make the milk payments. It's in our budget, the milk payment I put in the budget for the water and sewer project.
Next two pages is just month of August this year versus last year. Total income was a hundred thousand dollars more, while expenses were just about the same, so obviously again about a hundred thousand more in net income. Sales tax revenue is the difference there because of the different way that's allocated. Year-to-date through August, the next two pages. Revenue is about four hundred thousand dollars more, again, that's mostly sales tax.
You say through August, you mean September?
No, beginning of August, but I do September here.
No, I was just looking at any of this thing, we're talking about this page, I'm looking at the right page.
It's one over there.
It's right here, it says something.
It's one of the pages wrong one.
I just make sure that they're right pages. So here's one right here, yeah.
So the difference is there, so maintenance on water and sewer this year is a lot less just compared to what it was last year at this time? Like, a lot less?
That, we'll talk to, uh. Who's boiling? We're doing a lot of city work, kind of, doing a lot of city work. Lives up near that, it's building up near that, Rick Davis. Those two guys, owners of that have come down and have went over our list and stuff that we've got started and not finished and they're doing. They've got TJ tied up, they've got four or five big clarifiers to build and they've got two filter products already. If Glenwood filter product goes up, TJ's tied up in the shop for the next solid year, but they don't take on any more. So they're gonna bring crews in and start helping us get these little odd end things that haven't got finished, fixed up. We've got, we've got some work done last month, but we're not anywhere near on, caught up on our heavy maintenance that's gotta be done. I'll go with that one.
The last two pages, nothing to do here, I'm thinking, uh, there's the budget to actual. It looks like our income is way below, but again, that does not include water or sewer project additional money of nine, nine million dollars, um, eight million dollars. Nor were the expenses associated with those, that program, so. That's why it looks a little out of line.
The sewer project has been at the health department for almost six months now, it's gone through the third set of reviews. That job should hopefully get, be getting that to bid pretty quick. The water is getting ready to go to the health department, but the sewer project is, is, they've had three sets of comments. The last one, they wanted something that's possible to do, they wanna know where every water line crossing was and the depth it's gonna be between the sewer veins and. You, I don't know who up there at the health department wants that, but you, you don't know where the depth of every water line in City Glenwood is if these sewer veins are gonna be replaced and you're, there's no way of knowing that. If there's anything close, they told them we'll, we'll try to do something about it if there's anything close when you get there, if you don't know where that is. I wouldn't have a clue where it is, if you had dig up, oh, eighty-four thousand plus sewer veins gonna be replaced, whatever it is.
I know one thing, uh, just a quick note, but water and sewer might look good for a minute, but you go to burn it, that money you burn is fast.
We've got a lot of, you know, points of.
Ain't nothing cheap on that.
I've got all the work that we've got, we've got a lot of inventory balled last year that's not installed. We got, uh, at Industrial Park, you've got to complete the rebuild that lift station and put it, put it down to one pumping in. All that equipment's balled, it's sitting up here, it's not installed. Uh, at Sawmill, we've got all electrical equipment balled to replace all that that's burned up, uh, that's not put in. Davis Pump Station, we bought two pumps, you'll see on the budgets, you're gonna approve. One was out, one was in, both B F Ds were out there, two of the B F Ds were out at, uh, Trenty. Those been replaced. We've still got one pump over there that's got some micro switches or something out of it, they're supposed to be looking at to get that fixed. I'm trying to think, uh, you got a new motor delivered for the water plant today that's gonna hit us next month, that's one of those, about ten thousand, wasn't it?
A little, a little right at.
I think the new one was twelve and the rebuild was, well, one of the pumps we had.
What did they do about that one that we'd only used a week and it went out, did they?
That one, they run more than, the one that's in there that's using oil, it's quit using oil that's in there. They delivered a new motor today. Got both pumps running, but the, the pump that we put in, one of the pump motors we put in last year got hit the lightning and it's not rebuilding. So.
But I was thinking you told me one of them was sitting on the, in our stock, we put it on there and run it about a week and it started giving us trouble, but that one straightened out?
We think, this was dropping oil.
In other words, probably the, the rings hadn't seated good, is that what you're saying?
We're hoping because all we're running right now is while, the operator's actually there.
I got you, I got you.
But he's not losing oil in it.
That sounds believable, yeah, okay.
And it's quit leaking oil. If that pump, if that pump starts leaking oil again, we gotta, that motor, we gotta pull that motor, put a new motor on, send that motor in and it'll, it'll be under warranty.
I got you.
But it may, we still had to buy a motor because we lost a motor during all this.
But they do know, we're trying to figure it out.
Yeah, he told me, if you wanna pull the motor, you'll pull it, take it back right now, I said, but if it quits leaking oil, I'm gonna spend a labor pulling, there's nothing wrong with it.
I just didn't want to run it too long and then get hung.
If it's, well, that's why Howard, Howard's not running it if he's not had the plan.
Yeah, I got you.
If he's at the plant, he's running it and it's quit leaking oil, so. The guy from, we bought the motor from, said, go ahead and pull it, send it in, we'll tear it down and go through it. And I said, if it quits leaking oil, those pumps don't have the oil, then we can get a, a motor, you gotta oil them up. And we use, you have to use a mineral oil. No, we gotta use a mineral oil, it's different than, than any other body uses that oil. Everybody else can use regular oil, we gotta run a mineral oil that's safe, that can get you drinking water, not hurt you. So our oil is a little lighter than, than we have to run those, but seem to be sealed up and working alright. But it's possible that motor will still have to be changed and pulled. But we, they're supposed to deliver a new motor today, we haven't seen a bill on that yet. All right, anything else on the financials?
Yeah.
That motion except the financials, Robert?
I'll make it.
That next sheet there is just an information sheet, there's nothing to do on it, it's just your CDs that give you your money.
My next friend in the territory's around in Tampa, so.
We got a motion on the floor.
Motion and second?
Seconded it.
Roll call?
Chris?
Yes.
Alan? Yes.
Jimmy?
Yeah.
John? Yes.
Okay. The next one, if you, uh, well. Mitigation money that the state gets every year. You can get a seventy-five, twenty-five match, that's a three hundred thousand dollar application, you put two applications in. I've got stuff there for y'all to discuss on the two applications. Whatever you do on these applications, you're gonna have to have, you're gonna pay a grant writer's fee, so when you're looking at this on maybe the generators, I don't care how we do it, I would still apply for grant on both of them, hopefully you get it. But remember, the prices I'm gonna show you on the generators, you're gonna have a twelve or fourteen percent grant writer fee on top of that. And you're gonna have a twenty percent engineering to send these specs in and I won't give you the net for them to write it up and do it, so. But anyway, though, and y'all gotta tell me if you wanna do them, we need, we gotta look at both of these. One of the applications would be culverts and, uh. I would like you to apply for would be culverts and a bridge down on First Street. Uh, if you look at the pictures under the culverts, they didn't catch the bridge, but in the last mitigation report the city had done, I wish Britt was here because that was when Britt went around and took these pictures. And I think what we need to do to go approve that, just get the engineer to go in and write up what needs to be done on each of these culverts that they're showing it needs to be replaced. This is already in the, the state's already got these pictures, except for First Street. And write those up in one grant. If y'all will approve it for that. Uh, if we don't get a grant on it, we may have to go in there and start doing these individually, but these are not been, some of these, I'm gonna have to check, one or two of these may have been fixed already. I think one or two of the ones on, uh, County Line Road have already been replaced.
How fast?
This has to be, these grants have to be turned in by the fourteenth of next month, so we gotta get them done.
What I'm asking is, we go ahead and do some of this work on some of these culverts?
No. Not if you're writing up, anything we've already done won't be able to offer a grant. So if you're gonna apply, whatever you're gonna apply for on the grant you can't fix, unless it be bid and contracted. We have not got all these, some, one or two of these it's possible have already been replaced, I will have to go write it tomorrow. I didn't get these pictures back until the day on all of these, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen culverts. Fourteen culverts, fifteen, about fifteen culverts. So I would like for y'all to approve us to apply for the mitigation grant or the, whatever.
Yeah, if we, if we apply for this grant, how long is it gonna hold itself, it looks like some of these culverts ain't nothing but a.
Well, they're gonna get the bids up, they'll get the bids up pretty quick.
I mean, we're talking like ninety days, month?
At least, probably, yeah.
Is there not a couple of these, can you go ahead and do something with?
Whatever you wanna do something with, you can apply for in the grant.
I get that part of it, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with whatever you wanna do. Uh, but then if y'all go to the very back pages, the thing that they didn't catch in the, in all of this work, if y'all look at those, these pictures, that is the bridge of First Street. That's the sewer main laying in there that's, there's nothing wrong with it, the sewer main is a duct of wire and it's not leaking or anything. But then the foundation on that bridge is gone, there's no foundation on that bridge in that one picture. You see that one corner that's completely gone. And I would like to get that, that's gonna be expensive. Parts. Because first thing I'll have to do is get a box culverts that are wider than what's in there now because you can't, that, that old eight-inch main is showing right there.
Yeah, we're gonna have to lower that.
No, you just have to put a wider box culvert, they'll use those box culverts and they'll go rectangle and they'll say, well, I have to go wider right there. I think, I, I'm not the engineer, he gonna have to write that up.
Would you not have to lower that line now?
Can't. Hey, Lloyd, it's their line.
That's right, it's grabbing.
It's on grabbing, Lloyd, it can't be lowered. I will get the engineer to look at these, if we see something, if it's okay with y'all, if y'all approve us to do the grant application. If there's something we see that's, all these need replaced, there's not a question about them. But if there's a one that's really in danger.
There's one or two that looks like it needs to be fixed now and maybe we can find a couple of different ones, we can throw in your windows.
There's one right there that's total water, obviously, that, another one here looks terrible, that, I mean, that's here, that right there.
What number is that?
That's the number here.
Should be tough ages.
Oh, three, culvert number three. Looks to me like that thing needs to be.
Some of these we may have got done, I have not been out there, I got this sheet today trying to get this get on vacation last week. Uh, putting the packet together today. This is what's turning on mitigation already. And if y'all want me to, we'll, I'll get the engineer up here one day and we'll go through all these, it's gonna have to be quick. And the ones that we think we can wait, we'll put on the bid with the bridge on First Street. The bridge on First Street may be a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
But we can apply for up to three hundred thousand.
I would think number one and number ten probably need to be fixed right now.
Yeah.
Anyway, we can pick two more, if anybody, if they need to go in here with this, number one, number ten, they'll be fixed right now.
Well, all these need to be fixed, that's why it's in this report, guys, unless you can get a grant on it, to do as much of it as you can do the grant on. And you may not get a grant, you may be all even without a grant. I would at least like to apply for everything we can get on a grant on the grant.
I'm just saying.
Do what you want, I'm just saying. I'll go, I need to go by and look at some of these.
Is this a, is this a one hundred percent grant or eighty, twenty?
It's seventy-nine, twenty-five. But seventy-five percent better than a hundred percent, I think.
Yeah, we need to.
Yeah, we need to utilize.
Farshir is pretty bad, that's, that needs to be.
I got you.
I can get the engineer right, I don't think this whole project could run over the three hundred thousand. And put that as number one priority, we gotta talk about generators too in a minute, uh, because those are the two, and do two grant applications, we'll do one and then. Depends on how many people apply for grants, how much, what project you can find these two. And we have no way of knowing that today. So is it all right to go ahead and apply for the grants and the bridges under one of the grants?
By all means, I'll make a motion and move on with that.
The mitigation, the mitigation grant money that's out there?
Yes.
I have a motion to apply for mitigation grant on culverts and bridges as presented and we'll, I'll get back with you when the engineer gets back with us. Jimmy, you got any questions? You have a motion and a second?
I seconded it.
Roll call?
Alan? Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
John? Yes.
Okay. Next thing on your list are portable generator that's twenty-five or thirty years old, the gin end is burned up. Engine are out, but gin end's burned up. It never hooks up right because the switch on that went out, what, they changed the voltage ten years ago, twelve years ago and TJ's fixing it. You gotta change a, you gotta change a plate for the voltage electric, you gotta go into and gotta pull it off the bolts and put another one on there. And that's just not something I'm comfortable with our guys doing.
What can they, what's the stator out on or something?
It burned the whole end of it, it's, yeah, it's all.
Is, uh, what's, what's the, what's it put out?
It's a hundred seventy-five K W, I think it's. But anyway, I've been checking on, and if you look at the, there's one in there that's, these are all got mixed up. You should see one that says thirty-five thousand, or thirty-six something.
Oh, I haven't had that at all.
And it was in there, and I don't, I don't see it anywhere either.
That's what I was looking for, I've got seventy and a hundred portable, and I've got a fifty and a hundred stationary.
Thirty-six is the one that would be at right, if that's the way. Now then, also, this can be applied for on the grant. That would be your second priority, I would think. Uh, but this can be applied for, the generators can be applied for on the grant. They're supposed to be, and I gave it to them, I don't know where it is, because I brought all that up here, there's a thirty, I think it's a thirty-six thousand stationary.
Thirty-six K W, it was right at.
It's a two hundred amp.
Right at thirty-five.
It's around thirty-five thousand dollars.
I believe.
There's just a set of papers missing. It ain't here, it was in the hall, I should say thirty-six something. Now, it was in there when I took it up to them today, but I've looked at it. But anyway, then the stationary RS fifties will run one big motor at the Hilltop and Twin Bridges lift station. It will not run two. If you wanted to go with two, you would have to do the hundred. RS one hundred. These generators, if you bid them out, you gotta really watch on the quote on them, but I did not understand this, you got B F Ds at all pump stations there. And the B F Ds, you get in there and find there's a spec on this pump. Trash propane is the, that will be the tanks you buy, that needs to be pulled out extra because that, that would wanna be able to buy those tanks if you put these in. That, like on the, that fifty on that back page, it says RS fifty, RS one hundred, uh, P M G. That is some kind of a monitor that controls that B F D, the B F Ds so you don't burn your motors up on a generator. And if that's not in on the generator, uh, I was told that you will burn a motor up.
I'm confused as to which estimate we need to go with here.
Okay, you got a fifty?
No, 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 no. It's one of these.
There's two.
It's one of these, is one of these supposed to be natural gas and other ones?
Now, they're both propane, but there's a little bit of difference in the way one hooks up, one's a little, the Hilltop Pump Station, Twin Bridges is a little bit different in cost. One says Twin Bridges, one says Hilltop. There's a difference in, they're pouring the slab and all that, there's a little bit.
I got you, I got you.
Not a lot, but a little.
I didn't see that.
So those, if you do the fifty thousand, this will have the automatic transfer switches and everything, all the wiring done in it. Turnkey job, the way this bid is done from Northside. You'll have, if you do this as a whole, you're gonna have to bid it out, if you do it in one unit, you can probably do it without bidding it out if you want to, but that's up to you. But if you do it, if you definitely do it on the grant, you'd pay the twelve percent grant writer's fee and a twenty percent engineering design fee, which is designed right here, but anyway. But if you do it, if you definitely do it on the grant, you'd pay the twelve percent grant writer fee and a twenty percent engineering design fee, which he designs right here. But anyway. If you wanted to run. We very seldom ever, those pumps in those pump stations, one is a dollar. You run one, one broke down, he's gotta back that pump. You very. You very seldom ever run two of those pumps. If you're gonna run both of those pumps at those two pump stations, you'd have to do the RS one hundred. The hundred generator. And the difference in cost is about thirteen thousand dollars, I think.
So if you go with the one hundred, there's not a difference on the way they had to be looked at?
No, as far as, you'd have a transfer switch and, and electrical, all that's been in the package the way they're new.
Cause I didn't see a difference on those, on the hundred.
I don't know why there was a difference on the one and not on.
No, there is a difference. It's pretty, it's pretty front to back. I said, about two thousand dollars.
But you're looking at fifty-five thousand dollars against.
Uh, forty-two.
Forty-two.
Really, we'll, how many?
Thirty.
How many hours over the last five years does that thing run, would you guess, Mike?
It's a good question.
Just, uh, ten hours?
Oh, you probably run more than that. Oh, yeah.
Okay, one option, one option you know as well as I do, but one pretty good option is, uh, Huggin Hall. Huggin Hall, Humms, United Rental, at several levels, uh, sell them three-year-old really nice generators over at Blackman's. Every so often and you can buy a real nice one for about, like, times ten grand. That's got not that many hours on it.
You talking about portable?
Well, not really portable, portable, but yeah, portable enough, you know what I'm saying?
I wouldn't want a portable. Cause that's, that's the reason we're in shape we're in now.
You know the one you got at the store?
Everybody wants to borrow it. Oh, one like that?
Yeah.
I got you.
Yeah, tell them I want it at the store.
The one at the store wasn't portable. We just took it off the table.
I'm just saying, I don't.
The one down there at the.
Yeah, I don't want to be moved.
Mine's.
Yeah, but I'm talking about.
I was gonna be no, if it's a portable.
They, they depreciate so, they depreciate so fast and then they bought them out and they're still, don't matter being hours.
You might, when you split the rental one for them. There's not a rental in here. The portable, if you go on portable, you would buy one unit as opposed to buying three. But it's cheaper to buy three than your one.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Okay. You can put them all, you can put these that are made to stay in one spot, they're a lot cheaper. They've got a lot, there are a lot more stuff on a portable for the M draw and all that. I don't understand all that, but there's a whole lot more mess gotta be put on. And, uh, so if you went with running both pumps, if you look at the portable on that, uh, uh, rail power, it says on those. That's a hundred KW and a seventy KW. If you're gonna run both pumps, you need the hundred KW. If you're gonna run one pump, you need the seventy KW. But you're, and here's the big difference in the two bids. The three smaller ones, the three standby are automatic switch. We do nothing. Electricity goes out, pumps come on. The portable one, you got, if you look on the back of one of these sheets, you've got cables and you've got all this extra switch gear. Because I'm not gonna have it where I go to go out there and guess on what took it up. The new one, you have cam locks. It'll have four colors of wire. If it's two O eight, you hook up three wires. But it'll be, I don't know, I'm just saying a color now. It wanna be a red, blue, and a green. And the fourth wire would be a yellow for the four weight connection. And then, uh, you gotta switch the generator switch before you start it to what voltage you're running at the building. Where you set these, the other ones in, they're permanent set. If that's the way you wanna do it. But you wouldn't, if you do the permanent set units, you'd be cheaper by about thirty thousand than you are to buy one portable. And then the propane tanks, these are propane. I did these at propane instead of diesel. Diesel, you don't ever run the fuel out of those. You top them off with diesel again and next thing you know, you got ten-year-old diesel fuel in the tank. With propane, it don't go bad. But your, your cost for the eleven, for the three five-hundred gallon tanks. Delivered in all your regulators and all, eleven thousand nine hundred dollars if you did. This is food for thought. I threw it in front of you that, that if you wanna apply for the grant, you gotta say, let's apply for the grant. And these will go in and they drive specs up and bid them out. Uh, I wouldn't probably bid the propane tank out. I'd rather get that from a local guy. Cause he's gonna have to be the one filling them.
I'd rather get this one.
These will be bid if you do it. You can do it, bid it either way. But if you're gonna go, if you want us to apply for it on the grant, take, maybe get seventy-five percent. You can apply, but I need you to do, and if you're gonna apply for a grant and we're gonna look at it anyway. You need to, to tell me whether we're gonna go with a portable generator or a three. Permanent mount generator.
I'm not looking to pay a hundred six five thousand dollars for a hundred K portable generator.
No. Well, I, I didn't, I got you, cause that's what you had. I just, I'm presenting you all the information, guys. I'd rather have a permit because we get called up and this city and that city wants to borrow a generator. We come up with a generator and everybody telling that generator been borrowed. It's been coming back with something burned up on it. Nobody's paid anything for the year. Actually, instrument supply, a company that you buy your equipment from, borrowed it and bought it back with the switch burned up in it. And didn't fix it. So that was been.
That's been.
Eighteen years ago, fifteen years ago. It's been a long time.
I bet it's been close to.
Do we get some little big hook up on natural gas?
Well, I don't have natural gas at Hilltop. And natural gas, right now, natural gas is not gonna run a service or a generator. You could get natural gas at two of them, but you're gonna have a jackhammer in the parking lot going up in there, riots about the gas line and. And you could get, uh, you'd get a natural gas one at Twin Bridges because it's.
Oh, that's something I didn't ask about. Are we gonna be able to fit a, a tank inside the fence there?
Yeah, we, we've looked at that and long.
We've had huge generators and used them on propane. And they were clean run. They'd run about two hours a month. And, and not use them hardly anything.
Propane's real good running on water.
Yeah.
But. I, the thing, if you, okay, let's say you drilled out the portable generator. You're going to standby. You wanna look at getting bids on the fifty or the hundreds. You wanna be able.
It's only a.
You'd have, you'd have to manually turn two pumps on for it to run two pumps. The switch, the automatic switch gear won't turn two pumps on. So we don't have it set that way today. On electricity, you won't turn two pumps on.
What about the option of applying for a grant? And if we don't get the grant, then we look at the secondary market and see just how much difference there is in a three-year-old generator and a brand-new one. I mean, there might be like a seventy thousand dollar difference.
Well, it won't, on the black one, fifty thousand, you're looking at, but the thing you're not, and the thing I've got, if you don't have this. I've been real worn, real heavy.
The one with a hundred sixty-five thousand, Johnny's what Chris was showing on there.
The thirty, the thirty-nine thousand one twenty-six on this fifty. I don't know how much that, that, uh, PMG is. Do you have a full PMGs on the Gulf Wells? He said, if you don't, he said, you can get a generator a lot cheaper than this generator. But he said, if you don't have that PMG on there, you're gonna burn your motors up if they're on VFDs. They'll burn the VFDs instead of motors. He said, it's very expensive not to run, he said, that P, that harmonics, am I saying that right? He said, it's critical. And he said, people beating generators don't look at that.
It deals with the start of the motor, it's not getting started. That's what the VFD.
The VFD, uh, some, something about this, there's something in the harmonics and I don't understand electricity in harmonics.
Generator kicks on. So it makes that thing seem like it's a VFD.
Doesn't send it all to that.
Yeah, it's just ramping it up or ramping it down. It's not instant. Yeah, I got you.
If y'all wanna do, I personally think we need to try to go with the grant first. So.
Seventy-five twenty-five.
Yeah, seventy-five twenty-five. And then we gotta pay, so the numbers you're looking at will be thirty percent higher if you bid it than what you're looking at. Because you're gonna pay the grant writer, you're gonna pay the engineer twenty-five, or twenty, whatever their percentage.
This is with the slab and everything.
That's slab and everything. The only, yes. And if you look at the propane tank, the propane tanks are not in that bid. The only thing that's actually getting put in here is, uh, the gas line. You didn't know if you fit a gas line in there.
Uh, it said right by the chair.
What, what was your question?
It said the two-year.
Two-year. You can backstand one, you're going.
Cummins on the motor itself with the two-year base warranty when used.
Don't just need to tell me which one we need to work on.
Um.
Right now, if we have pump station electricity go out, we don't have generators. Cause our generator is. According to your buddy, he's looked at that up there, tore it out in DJ shop. DJ tore it down up there. He said, Billy. I wouldn't put a twenty-five year, I wouldn't put fifteen, twenty thousand dollars on a twenty-five-year-old generator. Because he said, you still got a motor that's twenty-five years old. And he said, it is, he said, he, he said. I just don't suggest you fix it.
You said the only, the only reason it wouldn't turn on two pumps is cause the switch won't turn on two pumps. You had to manually, but it's still running two pumps.
We can run two pumps. We could, the water operator would have to turn both pumps on.
If we're out of power, I can almost guarantee that Howard's gonna be down here anyway. Cause he's gonna be checking his plan on them.
It would take, if you're gonna run both pumps, it'll take the one hundred. It will not that, RS thirty-six, I don't have a paperwork here on. It will run both pumps because on the sur lift stations, they have, if they both, if the float switches kick them on, they're gonna run. The fifty will not run both pumps.
You said it.
The fifty will run one pump. You have to get the hundred if you're gonna run both pumps at those lift stations. We do not normally run both of those pumps, is what I was saying. Because we tried, that's a lot of pressure. You put, you go from six hundred gallon a minute, twelve hundred gallon a minute, and those mains, you're pushing a lot more water. I just need, don't go and look at the hundred or the fifty or, if y'all don't wanna do, whatever you want to do. I'm just, we have a generator.
If we're gonna do it, I don't see the need to buy and have what we need.
I just, I'm just presenting you both options, guys.
Well, not for thirty thousand dollars worth, you know what I'm saying?
So y'all wanna do the hundreds. If we look at the hundreds on the grant.
It's just my thought.
Okay. Would y'all make a motion to look at, uh, the thirty-six KW, which isn't, I don't know what the price he did on it, cause it was in there. It was in the package.
Thirty-five thousand and somewhere.
It was around thirty-five thousand, really. And this is more than the generator. This is all the wiring and automatic switch gear and all that hooked up. We don't. They, he's got, there, there's that, this company here has actually got an electrical contractor that does a, a electrical. He sets the generator and it comes down and turns the generator on. And this is Northside Power. This is who takes care of all your service on the generator up there. And it, it will be bid. Karen and him use, uh, they've been using specs from Caterpillar on their generator. I, I mean, specs are the specs. Long as they be specs, I don't care what's gonna give. This is just one, this is just Northside to give you a number of what you're looking at. I didn't. I blindside you with this now, cause I didn't know what to do. But I didn't, I also didn't know till last week, we could apply for this on that grant. I'm not telling you we're gonna get either one of the grants, but you can apply for two applications.
So which, which one has to have, which one has the two pumps?
Both. Hilltop and Twin Bridges both have two forty-horse pumps in there. Both are both the same size pump stations.
So what, are you just gonna put it out there and just wait for people to answer back? As far as bids go?
No, you'll.
Advertise?
No, uh, Karen, Karen and him, if you do it through the grant, Karen and him will put it out the bid and Arkansas Democrat is at this, uh, they got a job.
Well, there's not a whole lot. I mean, you only got like Tri Lakes, RP, and Northside.
You put that out for bid, you're gonna stay wide. You may get somebody that mentioned it, but, but I mean, if you're a little bitter, it is a get it if it goes out the bid and you get the answer. So make a motion, what, if you wanna do that too, and I'll use the hundreds and the thirty-six. And then the thirty-six on the one it does. The two one hundreds at Hilltop and Twin Bridges and the thirty-six. We'll work on the bid on that. Do I have a second? Yes. Yes, seventy-five twenty-five, bring it. You got a second?
Yes.
Jim.
Yes. All right. Next thing on the list, city park hours. We've got a lot of people with pickleball. They love playing pickleball. And it's too hot in summer and then they don't, it gets dark in the winter. I got, got my six poles, man. I have two of them in the wrong spot. The poles I got. And I've got people that are donating five hundred dollars to light those double big LED lights. You gotta put, you have to put four of them on a pickleball court. If you lift a basketball court, you need another four. Or five hundred dollars fixture. I have supposedly got, and I got one check brought to me this afternoon to pay for one light, uh, on pickleball court, the five hundred dollars. And I supposedly have four paid for on pickleball court. And then I've got two more that's already agreed to pay for two on the basketball court. And then if we got two more to pay for, five hundred dollars piece, we'd have the lighting fixtures paid for.
Can I say something on that area?
Yep.
Okay, I brought this up different times over the last year or two. And, uh, but I still believe that there is that person out there that has a real interest, whether it be, uh. Geographically or, uh, logistically, or however you would call it, in that area, that if we would find something. Older person, some retired vet, some, somebody, and give them some type of jurisdiction over that part. I don't mean like, you know, walk around with a sawed-off shotgun, but give them some type of jurisdiction over that part. Where they would kinda take it up to their wing and look out for it, to where if something did happen to the part, that they would at least be a good source of info. Backwards it, that I think that that person's out there that would help us keep that part in nice shape for some of these elderly ones, different ones that are using it. Just to know, you can carry on.
Okay. I would like for y'all to consider if we're gonna light the, the court, to change the hours at the park to three or four hours after sunset. And then you'd have lights on it. The lights will be on if they come on electric eye, then you, you turn them off in four hours. Turn it on, then it turn off. But we didn't change.
First light, I'll walk, I'll just go out. Is it timer?
No.
So you just turn it on like an hour later it goes out? Wherever you're at mid-point?
Well, no, you could, if you're not gonna play, you, you can turn it, but it's supposed to be four hours.
Yeah, who wants to turn down sixty-eight dollars?
The, uh, what.
Cause you know what's happening, we go to turn them on and off.
What we had looked at was put them on an electric eye. And if you set the light, we could, we could do it four hours after sunset. We'd set the timer to run the lights for four hours and go, these are LED lights. They're not, those big LED lights aren't pulling those. Big lights now aren't even pulling one out. They're. But anyway, um. We'd put them on a timer and run it. If y'all say the park can stay open four hours past sunset, three hours past sunset, one hour past sunset. That'd be what the timer said on. But y'all, we need to change the park hours if we're gonna light the park.
That's a big difference because some part of the year that'd be about nine PM and another part of the year be midnight. So we wanna.
Well, for instance, in the heat of the summer, they're gonna play pickleball after it gets cool enough to play. Hopefully in the winter, they'll be through playing four hours after five o'clock.
If they're up there after midnight, they're probably up no good.
What is the latest sunset in the summer? He may not, may not wanna say that.
Nine o'clock.
Instead of X amount of hours every.
Nine.
Can't be your church being around or whatever the three is.
Then it's gonna probably come to you, you're gonna hear about it personally. Maybe we need some more time to play, but, I mean.
We didn't change, why are we doing, we're gonna have to change hours since sunset.
If you drive by there, somebody drives by there and there's every court sold, it's ten oh ones. Nobody's gonna run them off seat up out of the park.
If you drive by there, somebody drives by there, there's every court sold, it's ten oh ones, nobody's gonna run them off seat up out of the park.
I'm, I'm glad to see the courts getting used like that. Y'all just need to vote on the time, how you want to close the park, what changes or something. Motion, a second, close, change the stadium. But I mean, I think people, the pickleball people are gonna go, oh, they're, they're not gonna be out there at midnight even for hours.
Yeah, yeah, you know, unless it's, if it's a church group or something like that, I mean, we're gonna be really, I mean, seriously.
Okay, so have a motion, a second, Rocco.
Alan.
Yes, Chris.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes. If anybody has, knows anybody that would like to contribute money, we need another thousand, another two hundred.
More time, Billy, more time, like what I'm saying, that'll work. What I was saying earlier, that'll work in the right situation, somebody that walks at the park every day and thinks, man, I wish I could do something about these people that are carrying this stuff up.
We have not had near the problem that the city park this year we've been having, I think, with every activity that's going on there, I think. We, we have not, and they may carry it up tonight, but we haven't, have we had anything tore up at the park this year? I think this year has been a very, I don't know why, but we haven't had the stuff tore up at the park this year we've been having. Yeah, that, that is the grant application that I have to fulfill. This.
For the generator.
And the. Oh, hang on, hang on, that is another, that's another thing. All right, now you've got to, the AC EPD grant application. We've applied for this twice, this is for the UV light at the sewer plant. This is under, for cities of low income, low water income grant. We should get it someday, uh, to have a motion to apply for it again, pay more charge.
I'll make it.
In a second, I'll see. Okay. Uh, need two more, two more poles left and a wire to pay for. Five hundred, five hundred, it's five hundred dollars for all the double lights, that's all you guys put on the pole. I've got money, I was gonna pay for one, I've got money for six of them. Thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars, that'd help pay for the wiring. Get fifteen hundred dollars, we should be in the city. I don't know what the guy's charging me amount of poles, but I could mount those, have y'all looked at those poles? I told Chris and he said, you, don't make sense, poles look a lot taller up than here, they're total head over ground. There'll be two of them poles that's in the ground that we won't put a light on them. All right, but we're looking for, the five hundred dollars we're paying for the lights and then the, we still need to get the wiring paid for. There'd be eight lights, is what you'd have to buy to, to both, it'd be nice those two poles that sit in there, if we had the money, to spin around and put two on that backside to light that, uh, skate ball court up, cause we've already got the pole, two of the poles are already up there. But if you just put a light on the back of it, you could light that, so if you do that, it would be, you'd need another thousand dollars. If people see this, maybe they'll, that's like I told Pickleball Joe, we come on, let someone come in on lights and say, guys, we're, city doing what we do, y'all just give a little help, we'll, we got the poles, we got poles laying up there we bought last year at the bargain, I got fifteen more poles, we could light two more ball fields. We got somebody to pay the money to load, and we got the poles, that's expensive thing, usually. All right, the next thing, I basically called all you guys, we don't have a raw water, uh, meter working at the water plant. I've called all y'all already.
Just to clarify, cause me and you talked about, talked about this on deck, but the day you and I went down there to the water plant, whenever you were first walking up to where you would go to Howard's deal, you would go to the left, back towards the pillars, and there's a little aluminum box, you raise that lid, you go down a little ladder, and that's that meter we're talking about?
No.
No.
Okay.
The meter, that is the meter, that's a raw, that's the, if you, going out, that's the water going out, we've replaced that meter, it's working. This meter is for Howard to know how much water, Howard takes a runtime on a motor and tries to average how much water is coming into the plant. That meter's not been working for you, he's got a meter that gives you a reading, but it's not right. And this is the meters of, these, these big meters are expensive.
While we're on the subject, you know, whenever we had that bad freeze and our, uh, meter, our, uh, our measurement.
The meter.
Messed up, it froze in the full position, but we had no water in the tanks.
Right.
At that one point, has that been corrected where we don't have a repeat of that?
Yeah, no, that's, that's why we got finished up with all those dump boxes that got. That is one thing we have got finished, those are all in and working. They're all there. This meter is ordered, but I would feel like you to approve it, y'all, okay, in verbal, it's not here yet.
How much a motion to approve that?
It'll be ten thousand seven hundred eighty-three ninety-three. Have a motion, and a second. All the favor, Rocco.
Alan.
Yes, Chris.
Yes.
Yeah, Tom.
The next two items are both, two different pumps in the same pump station. One was complete, one was out, we don't have a backup, the one has been installed, but we need to approve the, it's eleven thousand, no, I got permission by that, I bring all this by y'all, that's the pumps at Davis Lift Station. One of those is in running today and the other one is a backup, cause that other pump did.
Did they both order at the same time?
Sir?
Did they both order at the same time?
No, they're ordered.
One, one was like three days before. The freight, I know, that's.
They can't ship, for some reason, into Arkansas, Tim Carver can't ship but one pump at a time.
Yeah, but the, it's crazy, cause they use the same company.
Same company.
It ended up being a seventy dollar difference.
Yes.
He needs another stack of trucks.
I guess.
But if y'all can approve those, those are pump states, those, one is in running, one is a spare.
You said it's been Davis run?
These are at Davis, both of these are.
I'll say it.
Is it for both?
Sorry, yes.
So we got a Northside, Southside, boy, coming together here, huh, come on.
But that, that, is that pump only used for Davis, can the backup only be used at Davis or?
That pump is only sized for Davis. All, you've basically got a backup pump for everything, we just never did have a backup pump for Davis.
Very few pumps in this system are, are the same, wow, there's only like one place in, that you can use, no, can't anymore, because the cemetery's been taken out.
Yeah. We have, we kept those pumps, we got those two pumps that we took out of cemetery, we got those backup pumps. Motion, a second.
Johnny.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Okay, this is our quarter, next thing is our quarterly planner, just letting all of those that are getting sent in, we're an administrative board at the sewer. Uh, this is just telling agents in the state, I don't know how they don't know what we're doing, because they know what we're doing, we have to send these reports in for a quarter. So they're laying the vote on, that's just a quarterly report that goes into, uh, code enforcement. Next thing, Jason, has got the sewer audit for December thirty one, uh, twenty-three, we finally got it back on the water.
And the Blimwood Water Sewer Audit is for period ending December thirty-first, twenty-three. Uh, which was done by Karen Rogers Manning and Fowler out of Arkansas, they'll give you. See, the first page is just management discussion analysis, based with a summary of water and sewer programs. Third page is the auditor's report, which with, in an audit, you've got three options, a qualified opinion, unqualified opinion, and no opinion. This is an unqualified opinion, which is the second paragraph, which says in all material respects, the respective financial position of Blimwood Water Sewer Department is at December thirty-first, twenty-three and twenty-two. The respective changes in financial fish, financial position where applicable, gas flows thereof for year end is in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in United States of America are presented fairly. So there are no issues, if there were, you have a qualified opinion, that's when they say, we agree with some of it, or we don't agree with some of it, that's a qualified. Unqualified means there's, everything is presented fairly in all material respects. Of course, they also looked at our internal controls, which is part of the audit, which is, you know, all the dual signature stuff. Who does what, put stuff in, make sure we get a good control over what's going on. I'll be happy to try to answer any other questions that I have over.
And this will go in with our, the state does not audit the water and sewer department in our state audit, but this audit goes to the state, and it will be included in our audit if the state saw something they didn't like. But Jason explained, this is a much more detailed audit than what the state audits the city and city general, correct? This is a much more in-depth audit than when the state comes in and audits the general public police fund, this is a lot more in-depth audit. But it will be included in your, when we have to do the approval from the state audit back, we'll approve it with the overall state. Does anybody have any other questions on the, on water department? If not, I have a motion to accept the December thirty-first, twenty-three water and sewer. Can I make a motion to accept, in a second?
Yes.
Rocco.
Alan.
Chris.
Yes.
Yes.
Tom.
All right. The printer in the police department. It's not a, you've got a bid, Datamax is the one that the city's been doing all of its work from. And if you go in there and look, there's a sheet in there, the Datamax, that sheet right here in the Datamax folder. And then this is just a copy of the, the copier that Datamax pulled to, to take you up to the seventy-two thirty a month fee that we're paying for the one in the, large, in the police department, now if you change it, I will take it to the maintenance bar, cause we don't have a working printer for them to print all their work out up there. We're paying seventy, seventy-two thirty today, uh, for that printer that's in there in maintenance, that's on this sheet right here. If you get a colored printer, it's gonna go to a hundred and thirty-three fourteen a month. On the one they're proposing, and they've got one for a hundred and sixty-five and one for a hundred and twenty-four.
The one thirty-three is their top of the line, the one sixty-five is for thirty, that's sixty months. The other one for one sixty-five is thirty-six months, it's a huge printer that we, we purchased. The bottom one is the lower end of the line, sixty months, a hundred and twenty-four.
I used to do all this stuff for Datamax, I've replaced my color printers at the store with this printer right here. You buy it one time for seven hundred nineteen ninety-eight, it is a, it is a toner printer. We're having great luck with it in the store, and if you look at the reason I did it, that monthly maintenance, you multiply that a hundred and thirty-three fourteen times twelve, what have you got? This doesn't have maintenance on this, but every two years I can buy a printer.
I've got experience with exactly this subject in pretty good depth over thirty years, and I'm with you on the seven nineteen, that's much.
I went, I went, I moved everything I got off of this company. The copy, the copy cost on this is the same, you're paying a copy cost, black and white's two point, uh, uh, three cents, and the color is gonna be, it's going to, one cent on the new machine, and the color's gonna be four point two. The toner cost is what that is, and that's gonna be about the same on the seven nineteen, if you go with it, so you'll still have that. The toner cost is gonna be there no matter which one I use.
Is this thing printer we got in the store?
Yes, the one that's on Brandy's desk in the.
Well, and like I told him, I'm, I'm not opposed to that at all, I just, the, the reason for my color printer, I don't wanna be dead here right now, it's, it's just some of the things we do has to be covered.
We're under contract with other printer, we're going to buy a printer, I would take you to the black and white printer for the maintenance bar, but I'm under contract with that, and I've moved that printer to the maintenance, that can't print.
I make a motion we go buy the, the one you have experience with, this color printer.
Yes, color printer fax, uh, copier, it does all three.
Yeah, I mean, if we print, uh, toner.
Now, I'm not gonna have, not, not everything we need is covered, but.
The only problem I have with these on the ones they put in black and white at the store, I run statements once a month, and you got ten thousand pages going to it. This doesn't have a big enough data card to hold the ten thousand pages, so, but you're not gonna be doing that. So that, that computer that's got that printing, uh, statement report, it tied up till it gets enough room to release the memory into here, but you're not gonna have it up here, so you know, we don't print that much money anymore, I'll print that much. We don't print that much, we, we won't be printing, I forgot it's like five hundred, five hundred sheets, that's what this could hold the memory at a time. Motion, who made the mo, Alan made the motion, you? Uh, which one made the ticket, Jimmy Stager, Rocco?
Alan.
Yes, Chris. Yeah, buddy.
Johnny.
Well, I see, that, that one should be able to get up under contract pretty quick, cause that's the one that was in the water and sewer audit. I know that was the one that was in Brendan's office, did y'all buy that?
See, I think that told me it was paid for, you're just under a maintenance contract.
We'll have to go for the contract they signed on the, I don't know what that is, we'll watch out, we'll come time to renew the maintenance contract, we'll look at that.
I've got something to say, it's gonna have to do with any person in this room, but I've been asked to say that it is illegal to drive, you take the ATV or the city's resources.
Okay. All right. Alan, yes?
Yes, uh, I.
I got one more thing too.
I just want the city council or whatever, get feedback, however we gotta do it, but, uh, I've been, I've been to different places in Florida and, and different ones, and of course, we live in agricultural area, so you've got some oil, some water. Uh, but I would like to see Blimwood, because, this is me personally, speaking of course, but, you know, you have motorcycles, no helmets, no seat belts, one person, you know, I would, and side by sides, much easier to see, I would like to see, I know we can't regulate state highways and all that, but I would love to see us become more, uh, side by side friendly in our city, whether it's the form of ordinance or resolution, or however we can do it. Something that would be where an older couple could get on there, a little electric golf cart, go ride around, if they wanted to sell a, it might be more trouble, it's worth to sell a fifty dollar a year permian, or a twenty-five dollar a year permian, or something, or, or something, but as long as it's got good lighting and, uh, people ain't drinking and stuff on it, you know, I, I just think that it would be probably, uh, a good thing for our community overall, you know, so, just my thoughts. But I guess it's something for us to think about.
Well, I've had, I have had people contact me, want to cover some of the backgrounds of the UTVs and overfishing, that's me. You know, I understand that I can't afford it, the way it is right now, so, you know.
Can I say something? They got electric, uh, wheelchairs everywhere, all the hot springs, they got all the, got electric wheelchairs all around the grounds and everywhere, and what would be the difference?
Yeah.
You got some golf carts that's street rated lights and signals on, and you got something else.
Should be a. Down the bike, we started to label.
Should be a special.
Alan, I agree with you, and to add to that, a lot of our vacationers and people.
Ellen, I agree with you, and to add to that, a lot of our vacationers and people that do the Airbnb's. I've seen them on their little four wheelers and things, and we can't just be on them all the time, you know, you can't get, you know, so. We do need to be a little bit more tolerant, user friendly, if the safety is.
There's a speed limit for them.
Well, and the only problem we're gonna have is some of your reptines that, somebody said, now where my piano right now. Is they get out here and, and the people get to call and complain because they're running up down the road, loud pops and. And all hours of the night, and, and that's where we finally had to kind of slow it down, so.
Yeah, lady that cars too.
We might could do something like Johnny would say, you know, where, you know, like from, you know, day ten to ten, or, I mean, not ten to ten, but, you know. Till a certain time or something.
Yeah, but yeah, but like, like you gave the journals, they got a, a time.
I just wanted to think about it, throughout what might work for us, and make it work, it was. And I will say one other thing, there's a lot of people that come from these communities. That, uh, from communities that are used to that, and they don't think anything at all about it. You know, they, uh, they're just tuning around, and they don't really think anything about it, but.
Where we lived in Colorado, people, they put their side by sides downtown all the time.
Yeah. No problem.
Arizona Tech, because they have Steve Lassman, they have a lot of tech in mind.
When they first come out here, Arkansas started Lassman, then they quit. Started not to.
Johnny, you're saying they.
So Arkansas passed, I believe it's House Bill ten sixty-six, it's called holding through that number, but. Basically, the state has left it up to.
The states.
And or the counties, and you can adopt ordinance.
Yeah.
And there's some stipulations, right, you have to have it registered, you have to enter.
Yeah.
But it, it's very due.
Yeah.
Set your own rules and rings up.
Y'all, I'm looking, that's something to look at.
Something I'd like to look at, and they see.
I'll blow it out and get the, get the statute and step on it.
They will call, they called Mississippi, the rabbit called Mississippi, they tied statute, see if they've got, they probably got a generic ordinance.
Well, the city workers of Glenwood used to drive around town, that was part of how they go around.
Johnny.
We're red meters.
Well, the, it's already out.
Johnny, what you're saying is, actually, I'm sure it is, if they pass that.
If the ordinance is out, if it's not a statute, the written statute that goes with it. We want to sit back and wait for that written statute, that's the same as the, the lowered bumpers or they used, they called it lowered bumpers, it's after chassis and frame. The state come out with that ordinance, or with that, that, dropped that statute number, but they didn't put a statute behind it. Until last week, it finally come out to where you could put words to what it means. Because their original deal said altered bumpers. Well, those vehicles are not altered bumpers, they're chassis and frames.
Right.
And I, when I talked to the ACIC guy about that, I explained to him that you used, it just set up to get a lot of, lot of cases lost, because. They're gonna go in there and say, my bumper's not altered.
Yeah, it says it's, uh, House Bill sixteen oh six, now, it's now officially Act nine twenty-two.
Okay.
And it says, uh.
There's a statute that runs with it and move forward.
Must have a steering wheel, non, you know, there's all roll over protection, at least two headlights, rear brakes, turn signals, there's a whole list, yeah.
That's all I was asking for.
Must be a licensed driver.
Yeah, if, if you don't have that.
Registered, yeah.
Dehabilitated and is putting two, that's, it's hard to do.
So we need to get Mississippi and see if they got a ordinance written, do we have to adopt ordinance?
Yeah, see that's the.
Then we could have, yeah, we wanted to.
Correct.
Right, they're letting us, everybody suit our.
I will, we'll try to get, I'll get them on Mississippi and see if they got an ordinance written on that.
Well, I'm noticing they're selling kids now to acting UTV, ATV, and coparts to package through them. So, there's.
There are. One other thing, there is no agriculture on the hill too, that.
Farm to farm.
Technically, you can throw a bale hay in the back of your rig and run all over Glenwood, and if they ask you where you're going, and you wanna lie. You tell them you're headed over here to feed your horse on the other side of town. Way I understand it, ain't no like.
That don't work.
State police.
I got a ticker for that, if he was actually going farm to farm, and I'd be passing.
State police.
That don't work for them with.
State police has stopped me two different times though. On my ATV, sixth place, going down the road, I did not tell them I was going from farm to farm. And the officers were extremely nice, and they said, they smelt my cup to make sure I wasn't drinking. And they said, uh, would you be, would you try to stay off of main highway? And I said, yes, sir, I sure will, and my wife and kids with me, and they were extremely nice. Now, I'm not saying they were all through.
State police told them he was fine.
Just don't be on the highway and don't be.
Correct.
All right, I'll get it, I'll get, uh, Mississippi.
I got to be fair with everyone the same, if I, if they want, I got to, uh, you know, if they give you something else.
I'll have it to you, if I get it to you, I'll try to get to you, everybody, we get an ordinance. Uh, that's, that's wonderful.
And, and before we get to finish up here. Uh, uh, about the bridges. Can we not just put a pipe in there, there's not a great deal of water that goes under these bridges.
First Street, big amount of water.
Well, I mean, I'm talking about the second street.
That's not the bridge we have.
All the bridges that we're looking at, seven, first Street.
The rest of it's all they're doing.
The rest of them are covered.
It's, it's a big cover.
Well, they got covers on Second Street, they stop up all the time considering for the bridge, but. We're not looking to replace the Second Street. The First Street, and I'll, I'll let the engineer, it's probably gonna be a box of covers, it's gonna have some restrictions in it. Because you can't afford a bridge, the box, concrete box covers.
Oh, yeah.
That was, that's probably what they'll do down there.
There's a lot of water running down that.
Lot of water.
A lot of water.
And you can get a cover four foot, five foot, whatever first.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't do it there because the sewer line's right there when you do it.
And I'm, I'm just saying, on these secondary roads, you don't have a lot.
Well, that's another one, but that, that is not, we're talking about down here all around.
Yeah.
You got the other one. Lot of water coming in.
He says they're where the kind of a.
Little sash.
Yeah, a little sash.
Now then, I need y'all to tell me what to do, if you look at that sheet right here. Y'all know I've got, I'm building some more apartments. I'm paying for, uh, all the meters, all the water line, all the tap, all the saddle, everything. But I need some help from the city to, uh, the water main is in the middle of the road. It's got to be the, you got to, to make the tap, you got to be in the middle of the road, tell me how much I'm gonna hold the city's crew.
Where's this at?
Up there, by Lake Shore, I'm doing other problems.
I would, I would say you just need to pay the labor on it, because other ones, other ones don't end up digging it up for you. Because you're already paying for a tap, you already got all the line and body.
I'm paying for every, I'm paying for everything, but I need some help to get the city street done.
Just opinion, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Y'all need to, so nobody should not get something for.
This is right here where you come up?
Right here where it is, well, yes. You gotta cut, that main is right in the edge of the road.
Chris is a water comes, sir.
Don't tell me how you want it built, so I don't think so, somebody don't think when they see city crew over there working.
I would say that he would need to pay the labor for the guys being out there digging it up, he's already got. He got the tap, he's done to pay a tap, he's already got the line bodies, already got the meter bodies, already got his radio bodies, I mean, all that's already done.
I'm putting me up there for meter.
Paying the city for the labor.
No need to see it, but.
That's what I.
I'm gonna have to go here, basically, for the meter while I'm putting it in, I'm just gonna put the meter and the radios in and put it all in.
I have a question, I have a question about that. Why should you have to pay for it if the city put it there in the first place? Who, you didn't, you didn't put that meter there.
Well, I've gotta have meters for those, I gotta have meters for those lots, and I don't want, I was pay, I'm paying for all the pipe, there's four hundred foot of pipe going in there. Eight meters. Eight taps.
Instead of paying the city at that.
I get your point, right?
He's just, I, I get your point.
He didn't put it there, he didn't put it there, and he's already paid for the tap and everything.
I think he's just trying to do what he's supposed to do.
He's saying he's worried about if somebody comes by and sees the city employees digging the street up.
Okay.
Next to his property.
Next to his property. Because it would be on Facebook tomorrow.
This line could serve, at one time, we've got Dennis Street's had a water line problem, I don't have any city guys here. This line can actually be hooked on to and go fix the water problem on Dennis Street. Right here, Oakley is, this is Oakley Street.
Is that the new line you laid?
This is gonna be the new line, it wasn't, it'll be right down there, but Oakley Street, Dennis Street, or Dennis, that Dennis.
What is not telling you, we're not telling you that's gonna be three inches HTP, just like we put out there and say.
It's a three inch main.
That line on, that line on Dennis Street right there is two inch. So.
If we need to.
He can just print some more money.
You got more water.
So it's under asphalt, you're lying?
This will be under asphalt, but it's HTP five, this. If HTP leaves, you got a problem.
Just kind of off the record, I know where there's some asphalt there.
I'm, I'm, I'm paying for the tap and the saddle and the valve box and the blow off valve and the main and. But I'm not paying a tapping fee to bend everything on the leaders that you're, that can hurt that. Yeah, what type of, what do you mean? I just don't want somebody, y'all tell me what to do, and I don't want somebody saying I did something I wanted for somebody, that's all I'm asking. Y'all tell me what to do before we get started.
If, if it wasn't you, what would the other person do, would the city just take care of that since you've done the rest?
Most of the time, the city had paid billings for paying for putting everything in, but I'm paying for everything, I'm paying all the labor to put everything else in, I'm paying for all the meters and that.
So why shouldn't you pay for the movement, is what I was wondering? Other than you're printing your own money.
I tell you what.
Yeah.
I'll say the labor.
I say you're.
All you gotta do is loop that line back in.
Make a motion, I'll second it.
Got a meter, that line's gonna stop right there.
Yeah, that sounds right.
It's a tire, get your man right on. Yeah.
It's on record, you tried to do the right thing, you are doing the right thing, and above, so, yeah, we're good.
I'll make a motion.
I second it. Motion is the labor, the labor.
Because he's improving that.
I got you.
Yeah. Kind of make money, you make your feed maker, you shouldn't have any trouble. Right in the big line on the cook base.
Uh, right there, Wayne Park.
Yes.
I just said Wayne Park.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alan, bear it over.
Yeah, mayor's over here.
Okay, anything else, anybody else, anything else?
I do have a question, we had a complaint with the citizens last week, was there been any follow up?
All the place.
North.
Which, which one do you want to write the ticket on first? One's best as bad as, one's just as bad as the other.
We done it what we said.
We went up there and looked at it. It was some family feud thing, and the other neighbor ain't going in his yard, and he's got grass ten feet tall, and.
Well, we drove by, all the vehicles were, talking about Linda's house, everything was weeded under, everything was massed, and he did not see that pod from his house. Because there was the forest that she owns in between the properties.
He called me two or three times while he was doing it, and he gave me an update, and then he talked to the other neighbor the way I understood him, and. The lady, what's her name, what's the lady's name? What's that lady's name?
That, Linda, she's sitting right there.
Right, I couldn't remember the name.
Yeah, that's Linda, that's Linda.
Right, I couldn't remember the name.
Yeah, that's Linda.
The last name is.
Green.
Miss Green.
Yes, yes.
Miss Green came and spoke with me after that.
Correct.
Her own.
Right.
She, only one of those vehicles were licensed, and she intended to try to sell it.
Right.
At the time, all the rest of them were licensed.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And she said the man had never even spoken to her.
He lied about everything.
He'd never even.
I spoke to her one time, but I told him to move his barn barrel off my property. It was not blowing my brass, he had barn barrel on my property, and I asked nicely to move it, I saw him that one time, and put it in one time. I went to the lady over here at the. What, that insurance, whatever. Uh, HR block, asked her about what he said, she talked about she didn't know nothing about all that, that he, she had not, she didn't know me. So why about that too? He said that she had came to him and told him that I had spoke to her about him cutting my trees. I asked her about it, she said she had not spoken to him, she didn't even know me, I asked her if she knew me, she said no.
Yeah.
So all that was lies. He only got mad because I told him to move his barn barrel off my property. He cuts, all the wall he cut, has barn barrel there, had it there for a long time, and I asked him nicely to move it. That's the only time I ever saw him, and the only time I ever spoke to him, all the rest, that's a lies. He could not see my, my, uh, container, because that lot between my house and his is mine. That's where he had his trash belt on my property, he did not know my yard, but he said, he lied.
She's selling the tree.
Well, I had another guy come tell me for more than that, I had yard for last year.
Yeah, I could buy, I could buy there too later, he had, uh, parked on his grass.
Just thought of that.
Yeah.
I think we gotta turn, girl, we just talked.
And she didn't buy a cheap container, she brought it off the line.
Yeah, so it didn't look nice here, I paid top dollar parts for it, it looked nice because it's in the channel. And I realized I've got those things, I think we've summed up, and I'm working on, I do, I'm, I am one person. And I'm showing they're just baiting, but I'm trying to get it done.
I understand.
And I realized it needs to be done, I'm not denying, things need to be done, but I.
Yeah, but the day he talked to you, he said you were really nice, and you were gonna work for it, and just make it all work out.
Like I said, she comes down, me, I didn't have, I came, when I heard about it, I came down and talked to him about it, I said.
I make a motion with John.
A second.
Second.
Roll call.
Alan, yes.
Chris?
Yes, Jimmy?
Yes.